Let's call the meeting to order. And I invite those who are able and willing to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Any other discussion or comments on the approval of the agenda? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda, as she is right there with all the additions and deletions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number four. Any visitors?
No.
Okay. Moving on to number five, the consent agenda, which there is quite a bit here. We start at 5.1 and go all the way through 5.12. So are there any items that any of you would like taken out individually to be discussed? All right. Anyone? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to point out that Arrow Athletic Booster Club has made significant contributions to a variety of our activities programs, from pole vault pits to camp quarters and hotel rooms and different types of things that we use. So thank you to the boosters.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I wrote something down that I would like to personally thank Jay Johnson, Coach Johnson, for his 16 years of coaching service here at the school. He built a successful basketball program, and I appreciate him for that. His, you know, coaching high school sports can be trying at times, and in spite of the ups and downs that Coach Johnson experienced, he continued to persevere and be successful. My daughter played for Coach Johnson, and she has the utmost respect for him. And then a friend of mine, whose daughter also played for Jay, when she, and they went to state during that year, she, when I let her know that he was resigned, she said, "Wow, an end to an era." Bittersweet. So I wanted to thank Jay for his coaching service to the girls' basketball program in the district. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I'm also a little choked up on Jay. That's ridiculous. Don't cry. All right, number six, administrative reports and information, 6.1, administration. Jackie, you're first.
Budget year-to-date, we're at 99 percent, which that's good. This is the last one I'm going to do for fiscal year '18. Next month, I'll have one for fiscal year '19. I moved some budget around between object codes, but it's pretty close to where it should be. I don't have a comparison from last year, because I guess I did do one last August.
Do you anticipate there being any more on?
Oh, there could be.
There could be.
I would say we're not safe until like the end of October.
Okay.
But I've received invoices that late before. So it shouldn't be big amounts. I mean, if anything, there are going to be placements, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for Jackie? All right, 6.2, Mr. Strasser.
Hi, everyone. Two things. First of all, just kind of a quick summer, summer school recap. I just wanted to let you know that we had 36 stu-, 36 total students enrolled this summer, of which the vast majority were grades nine through 12. And of that, just to kind of put it in perspective, 49,640 total minutes worked. So just, I like that number. It sounded kind of good. But again, a larger, a larger number of students enrolled this summer, and I thought we had one of our better success rates. So I wanted to share that. And then just to let you know, the planning pieces for in-service and then the first week and getting that all put together is well underway. And I like to say we're ready, but I'm sure there's always little things, and we'll work through those. But yeah, that's where we're at, the middle and high school.
Thank you. Any questions for Cory? Thank you. Have a great start. Ms. Bartman.
Hello, everybody. First, I just wanted to kind of let you guys all know about what's going on as far as the preschool moving to First Lutheran Church. That's all done, and they're hankering in and getting ready to go. So they're, they're doing good. And then we also were able to hire four of our reading court tutors. We did get all four hired this summer, and let's hope and pray we can keep them. So we have one for preschool, one for kindergarten, one for first grade, and one for second grade. So that's pretty exciting. Brown and Hill are pretty much ready to go. Like I said, there's always some last-minute things yet, but for the most part, we're ready to get going. Our open house is Wednesday from 12 to 8:00. We have a theme this year, and you will find a pen and a bracelet that is housing our theme of unstoppable at the elementary schools this year. And what this means is just that we are going to be champion for each child. We are going to expect excellence. We are going to carry the banner for our school, and we are going to be merchants of hope. So, so that's kind of going to encompass our whole year, and we'll be doing a lot of fun things with that, so keep posted on that. And then I'm also doing a principal on a card, too, so I can get in the classrooms a little bit more, and it's all decorated with unstoppable and all that good stuff. And then the last thing is, I don't think I've been here since I went to the national principal conference in Florida, which was amazing. It was, I learned so much, and I got to network with a lot of principals throughout the whole nation and made a lot of great friends and connections. And so I appreciate being able to do that. It was, it was amazing. I really had a good time and kind of lit a fire, so, yeah. So we will be unstoppable at the elementary schools this year. We'll be ready.
Any questions?
That national conference was part, paid for by MSBA?
Yep. I won, I won the registration. Was the only one out of like 150 principals of the state principals at MSBA that won it, and I was pretty excited, as you can imagine.
She was.
On the beat and saw the yellow tag. So, yeah, that was pretty exciting that they were able, because that's, you know, at least $500 for the registration, so it was a nice little gift.
Good. Any questions for Tony? Good. You have a great year, too.
Thank you.
Yes. And 6.4.
Hello. I was able to attend the MBE superintendents conference with Mr. Enerston at the beginning of August. Came back with a lot of knowledge, especially around equity. So we will be sharing that with our staff for the first couple of days here. I was also able to attend the A-plus educators conference, so that same week. I just set up posts in the cities and went to a few conferences. But the A-plus education conference, I came back with a couple of good resources for our staff. MBE hired someone two, almost three-ish years ago, who was really focused on getting resources through MBE's site accessible to teachers, because teachers frequently try and find something on MBE's site, and it's a black hole. So this, this individual, she just changed her name, so I'm not going to say the wrong name. But she helped put together Testing 123, a website for our teachers, and it's set up by grade level, and it has everything linked for standards and achievement level descriptors, and you name it, it is there in one nice spot per grade level. So I'm excited to share that with our staff. Beyond that, getting our back-to-school in-service, in-service agenda up and running has been our task, and spending some time digging in some data is what we've been doing.
You like that?
I do like that, too.
Any questions for Mel? No questions? Thank you, Mel.
Have a good year, too. Thank you.
All right, moving on to 6.5, school board members. 6.51, negotiations committee.
Want to tell everybody the good news, Tammy?
What? What is it? It was so long ago.
That we, we, no, so.
Are we settled?
Yes. So we finalized the negotiations for the.
Custodians, secretaries, and the paraprofessionals. So both, both are in groups.
Good. Thank you.
They have to, they have to go back to their membership now for, we have a tentative agreement. Their, their membership has to vote to approve them, and when that happens, then the contracts will be brought to the full board for approval or disapproval, whatever happens. The negotiations committee has kind of tentatively come to an agreement there, so. Did a lot of talking about a lot of things, and we.
Circled around.
Basically, just ended up with the salary or the salary settlement. There's no major changes with a lot of language, so.
Still thank you for all your work on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
A lot of little mediums, but I think it was good, it was good discussion between both that kind of made them think about some things that, you know, we discussed. Next one that we'll kind of work on over, you know, the next few months is Mr. Enerston's, and he's kind of given us a little something. Jeff wasn't going to be here at this meeting, otherwise we were going to meet and just kind of just go over it, just kind of get the discussion amongst us going, and then, but we'll do that next month or something. But, so yeah, I think that's.
And we got Ms. Wellnutt's is done.
Yes, yes, hers was approved tonight, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Made good progress.
One other lone, lone tree, Deb's got to get.
Oh, that's right, yes. Yep. So we'll do that when we need.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
So they're almost done.
Almost done.
Still got a couple of things to do.
Well, thank you. Any other committees? Nope, just negotiations?
Nope, that's all that's met, so, yeah.
Okay. All right, then anyone else have any questions for them? Moving on to 6.6, superintendent.
Our enrollment to start the year, we're up a little bit from last year. You know, we have a larger kindergarten class and graduated a small senior class. And looking at what's coming in, the ins and outs, I think we're at 36 out, leaving the district, and 35 in as of today, somewhere in there. It's a little bit lower. I think in the past few years, we've been more in that 50 to 60 in and out, but this year, it's 30 to 40 right now. Of course, we still got a little time here. We got the rest of this week, and my guess is, is kids, and first day of school, kids show up at your door, and some just don't. And so we'll, we'll know more in September where our enrollment is. But it is up a little bit, but I think it's kind of in that range that we were thinking, so. Also, I have the school safety grant on Wednesday, the 29th, is when we can submit our school safety grant. So I have up here, this is the worksheet that we will be using and fill out. I think I'm going to have Ms. Bartman do it, because she seems to be able to win things, and.
She is lucky.
Basically, the way I'm seeing this, we're going to have about every school in the state of Minnesota is going to submit something, so it's, this is almost like a lottery. I think, you know, there's 600 buildings, 800 buildings or whatever in the state, and metro and rural get half and half, and so probably.
Who's going to make these?
Minnesota Department of Education screens it, and I'll take you through here a little bit, but they, they will be screening, giving you a random number. So everyone who puts in a grant on August 29th will get assigned a random number according to high priority and low priority needs. And then from there, they'll screen them and verify that what they're doing, what we're doing is legit. And then they basically, in October, make the announcement of who gets what, so we'll find out. But just to take you through here, we are requesting $494,000. I've been working with ISG. That's why you see ISG's logo on here, because they kind of help with this worksheet, putting it together. But as you can see up here on number eight, the high priority exterior entry security improvements that are proposed. We're looking at a fob door entry system and buzzer system. Here's the door hardware, locking things, where that's at. And then on this page here, you don't have this in your thing. You have the physical structure, which is, you'll see later, but we're proposing to add on to a vestibule on the east side where Mr. Strasser's office currently is, and that will become the entry point. We'll have to remodel the office if the staff is there. We'd probably move the school resource officer to right at the door. And then we need to add on, in the addition, there would also be a new principal's office and a conference room that we would, we would put in. So that's what this is putting into account. And then the rest are other high priority. We don't have any. What are the low priority? We have no low priority, but you can see some things here. This is where the lockdown equipment in, like the library would go, and we just, we didn't even put that in here, because I just don't see that they're going to ever get to these low priority items. And then our narrative is that we would, you know, the two entrances where they are, they don't have, most doors are locked. So basically, we're looking at funneling into the main office, so having a visitor's approach on the east side, and then that would come right into the offices. So if you can think about the high school entrance over here, where Cory's office is, it would say visitor's entrance, and he would come into the vestibule there. There would be buzzer systems. Once you come in, you're going to be talking to someone, and you can't get into the learning area unless you go through the office, and we'll have all of that, so. Basically, this is all of the requirements that we've put in for this, and so this has to be submitted starting at 7:00 a.m. on August 29th. So I will be here putting this in. So, but this is what we'll be applying for. If you go over $500,000, you have to have other plans for financing, because they will only finance a project at half a million. So if we, when we had our $800,000, you'll see in the, in like our facility plan or assessment, ISG put in like an $870,000 enhancement to this building. That was a complete remodel of the current office as it is. This is cheaper because it's a, it's an add-on, so it would be where you're doing that rather than completely restructuring the whole inside, so.
Can I have this?
Well, there's $25 million in grants. Half the grants go to the metro, and half the grants go to rural. And of course, the superintendents, our first question is, so we get 12 and a half million in the rural and 12 and a half in the metro? And they said, well, we'll check on that, but they clarified, half the grants rural, half the grants metro. Dollar amounts don't matter. So we could get $20 million rural, and the metro gets $5 million.
It's be after us.
Yeah. So it could be that way. I think the, I think what they're going to find is they're going to get overwhelmed, because they're going to see that they don't have $25 million in projects. They have, you know, $250 million in projects, or $800 million in, in school security upgrades that are needed across the state of Minnesota. And so I think they're going to get some pretty good data out of this process. And I was at a superintendent's meeting last week, and everybody's applying. Everybody is putting in for something. Everybody has needs, so. And we only did this building because we're in the process with, you know, the elementary, and we do have the buzzer systems there, but, you know, ideally, we need to make enhancements there, too, but we're, we'll see how the facilities stuff goes, and.
Good luck.
Yeah. So that's the grant, and this is what it'll be. So we'll be submitting that on Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning.
Yep.
And have it all ready to go in the.
Got it. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, you log in, I'll log in, and then it's a worksheet. I'm just going to sit there and cut and paste, or just type in what we have here, and then just hit submit. So it's, it's only two, three pages, so it's not a lot. I'm sure I'll have it in in 15, 20 minutes, because we've got it all prepared, so.
Okay.
Just kind of interesting, what building number we were, and I was like, found out, we've got a building number. Every building has a number.
I could've told you that.
Yeah, I'm sure you could've, but I wasn't aware.
Were you a good building number?
No, it just is, I don't know, but it was on there.
Seven? Okay, it's like 18.
Whatever.
54.
We have a, we have a vendor number. That was kind of cool. Our building number is 1854 for this building.
Nice. One thing I remember. All right, well, good luck. Don't ask me tomorrow.
Fingers crossed, toes crossed, lot of funs, okay?
Other than that, I, I think we're ready for the start of school also. Tomorrow, all district staff comes back. We have a welcome back breakfast, so board members, if you are able to come up for breakfast and, you know, be here to start the day with us, you know, we'd love to have you and know you're invited. After breakfast, about 8:30, we're planning to go to the auditorium. I will talk a little bit about the state of the district and the upcoming year and where we're at, and then Ms. Wellnutt's will kind of take over. Instead of me doing the student achievement, I'm going to just talk about our start of the year, our district's financial condition, and then the facilities update and where we're at, and help our staff to know, kind of what are the talking points if they're asked questions about that, so good to do that. And then Melanie will take over with the student achievement talk and goals, and we'll, we'll do that with our teachers and paras, so. And then we have three full days. We're trying to do it on one last day this year, so we'll keep you posted on how that goes, but I think we're feeling scrunch, but we've got, should be a good start to the year. So that's where that's at.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Number seven, any old business? Doesn't look like it.
Nope.
Number eight, new business. Moving on to 8.1, approve the lease agreement with the city of Jasper.
This is for our preschool classroom down there. We use that in the morning. So we did this last year, worked out well. I think the facility served its purposes and needs. We wanted to give this a few years to see how the numbers are, and hopefully.
Right now, all the morning.
Eight numbers, so, or eight, so. I think our, what is it, 10 is kind of the, if you go above 10, you got to start hiring additional staff, so there's room for a few more to come in, but that's what this agreement is for.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the lease agreement with the city of Jasper?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert. Any other discussion, comments, questions, thoughts? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the lease agreement with the city of Jasper signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.2, approve the lease agreement with First Lutheran Church.
Last year, we utilized the Methodist Church. We used, we leased one room from them, the Rest of it Brown. Due to the large kindergarten class, we had to add a section there, and possibly, we're prepared, if our numbers continued to grow, we would have had to add another, but we didn't. But we're going to use that other room as, for music, I believe. So that takes our preschool, and so we are leasing five rooms at First Lutheran Church for our preschool, morning and afternoon programs, and our early childhood special education classroom.
And ECFE.
And, and ECFE. So we've, we've kind of moved everything we had at Brown, the extra room at, at the Methodist Church, so there was like four rooms, wasn't it?
Yep.
And then now we've, and then we add one more space for some other special education students, so this works out very well, and.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the lease agreement with First Lutheran Church?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other thoughts, comments, questions, discussion? Supposed to ask three times, there's four. All those in favor of approving the lease agreement with the First Lutheran Church signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.3, approval of facilities use agreement with Minwest Community and Technical College.
Not sure how long we've been doing this, but we've been doing this every year for the wood and metals classrooms over there. And they're great facilities, and works out great, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the facilities use with Minwest?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert. Any other thoughts, questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving the facilities use agreement with Minwest signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.4, appointment of federal title representative and homeless liaison, Toni Bartman.
We have to do this each year. Formality for our title programs grant, which is over $200,000 a year, so.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of federal title representative and homeless liaison to Toni?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? All those in favor of 8.4, I'm not reading all that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. 8.4 carries. 8.5, approval to advertise for snow removal quotes for the 1819 school year. We're supposed to get a lot.
As every year, I say, I hope we don't need this.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, me, too.
And I'm glad we don't end it in March, because the last two years, we've needed it in April.
And May.
And May once, geez.
May Day.
May Day, yeah.
So.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the, for an advertisement for snow removal quotes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Any other discussion?
I just want to add, it's quotes, not bids. These are quotes where we have some flexibility to make sure that, where that's at. And actually, for the, the amount that we have for our snow removal, I don't even know if we're required to do this, but we've done it every year, and so I think.
I didn't say bids, did I?
No, but I just want to clarify, when you see quotes, that there's a big difference between a quote and a bid. Bids, you have to take the lowest bid. Quotes, there can be negotiation, there can be discussion for those types of things.
Okay. So any other discussion? I got the motions, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay. All those in favor of approving to advertise for snow removal quotes for the 2018-19 school year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to 8.6, and do you want to approve all these policies at once?
8.6 through 8.14.
Okay. And then 8.15 will be separate?
Nope, 8.15 also, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay. 8.6 through 8.15, approve policy 102, 401, 413, 419, 504, 506, 537, 22, 903, and 760.
And I can go through and just do a brief overview. Most of this is just a few words, not major changes, but we've had, you know, every year the legislature and comes out with the new laws and some different things. MSBA updates their policies. They sent out this. There were actually about 12 more, I think, Deb, in the list that we had.
Yes.
And we, I just said, let's just do these, because, you know, these seem to be ones that were most critical. Typically, we go through the policy committee with these, but I figured it wasn't warranting of that. But those first three, equal education, equal employment, and harassment and violence have one word, and it's, has to do with gender and gender identity and expression. So that's, and those are federal policies, and these are requirements that we need to have in there. On the tobacco-free environment, they add terminology to include E-cigs. Student dress and appearance, there's something about hats and religious wear, so it makes room for that. The student discipline, there's some language about E-cigs. There's some language related to threats and mean things being said about teachers There's some language related to threats and mean things being said about teachers and adults in your building, and then it also has some language regarding one-to-one devices that are kind of new. The immunization requirements is just some wording. For example, it changes the word statement to medical statement. It changes the word stating to affirming. And these are the type of things that they do in these documents. The public data request is a new law, and this comes in with some of that stuff where the electronic and people get your information without you knowing, you know? So that, this law kind of comes in to deal with that type of thing in schools. It's required, it's a Minnesota state statute, so we need this, might as well put it in place. We have so many data privacy things, and here, this is about data requests and mostly about pulling data without your consent, and so this just gives us some legal issues there. And then policy 903, which is visitors to school district buildings, has to do with PSEO and PSEO students being able to be in your building. We've never had any issues with it, but some schools have, and so the law got changed. It says, PSEO students are going to have access to your building. And then the lunch program payment policy is simply changing the name of our old system to our new system. I believe we just referenced that. So that is the changes in our policies. These are very minimal, and I recommend we approve. And like I said, it's normally goes through the policy committee, but I thought we should just have these to start the school year. Let's get this in place, so.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve policy 102, 401, 413, 419, 504, 506, 537, 722, 903, and 760? So... Thank you, Mr. Oy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any other questions or discussion? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving those policies signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.16, approve to declare eight cheerleading uniforms obsolete. Pretty self-explanatory.
Well, I think they want to use them to make pillows or something? Wrestling cheerleader pillows or?
Tell me that.
I thought that was something.
Yes, that's what she wants to do.
So they're going to destroy them, and in order to do that, to make these new pillows, they got to have them obsolete, so.
Got it. Do I have a motion to approve to declare the eight cheerleading uniforms obsolete?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Tauber. Any other discussion?
I don't think we were going to use them anyway.
I'd use them for a costume. No, just kidding. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the uniforms obsolete signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.17, approve community survey.
I think it's attached in your packet, but here is the community survey. It's not completely done because there's, we're waiting on the demographic study, and then there's a few grammatical things that we need to just go through. But in a nutshell, this is kind of ready for where things are at. It's been written, this top, as a letter from me. We could make that from the school district. I don't know what your thoughts are. Is it, you guys okay with it coming from me, or do you want it?
I think that's fine.
My means, I guess, fine.
But this survey will be sent to every household in the district. They will be able to take it on paper and mail it back in. They may also go and, to this website and do it electronically. Can only do it once because that survey there. They will give the district office more access numbers, so if people do request, we'll be able to send out. They typically say they do usually about 30, and they never use all 30, but if they did, they said it would be unusual, so we'll see what happens with that. But then, when we get into the survey here, they're just trying to get some demographic information, where people live, if they own property, if they're employed by this district, if they have children attending the district, and where they go, and then how do you like to see communication and what works for you? There's also those comments and suggestion boxes. On the next page is where we start getting into some of our background information, which is all of the work that we've been doing with our facility study and our community meetings, and this is basically where we start to wrap up, why are we doing this and what is this all about? And so, safety and security is a top priority, the aging buildings of our elementary schools, the educational inadequacies of our school buildings, and efficiencies with our staff and our resources. And then here's our demographic that's going to talk a little bit about enrollment growth or where we're at there. I did talk with Hazel Reinhardt last week. She said that the demographic study should be done this week, so I will be getting that. I would have hoped we would have had it by tonight, but we'll get that, and I'll work with the survey company to put in the words that we need there, so. But basically, here's another question is, is, you know, if the, what advice would you give the school board? And they're asking simply to pursue a bond referendum, do nothing, or not sure, need more information? So these are all things that we're going to take back and say, okay, this is what we need to do. Here's our elementary update options of what do we need to do. Option one is build a new elementary school to serve this. They do have the annual property tax increases for a new school based on these values. Now, the tax increases are based upon what we're currently paying plus a new $27 million, $26.8 million, and that would be the tax increase on what you pay currently and based on the value of your property.
That's per year, too.
Per year. Yep. Yep, so $19. If you have a $100,000 home, a $27 million elementary school would be about $19.43 a year. These are updated numbers that we got, so this is about as current as we can do it. When it comes time to the actual, those numbers will be a little different because things change. As we go through our truth in taxation every year, all that stuff changes and fluctuates a little bit, so. But this is what we've got right now, and usually, this is a pretty good ballpark number. And then here it asks, would you support, you know, support that new elementary school? There is a question on school location. The Brown Elementary site, at the middle school, high school, undecided or do not support any new building? So that, that'll come back to us. Option two is updating the existing elementary sites. And here, we've kind of got the actual pictures now. This is about the square footage added. These are all the items that we need to do at Brown, and they put down a cost of about $10 million. Here's Hill Elementary, where, how much space we need here. You can see how much larger the space is needed there. And it's got the secure entrances also, and that's about $12.2 million. So to fix up and do all of those things at our elementary schools, that's where you get $22 million. Would you support a bond referendum renovating these existing schools? And then reconfiguring grade level, getting a question here on, you know, bringing fifth grade to the elementary school. Do you support doing that? Here's the updates to the middle school, high school, which is our safety and security, ag greenhouse, technical education classrooms and labs, and fitness and cardio room. So we've got that. And then here's like the funding support, which is about, you know, the elementary, one of them, this or that, middle school, high school. So if you did everything, could be up to $29 million for everything. And then we have another chart here that starts to show, here's the tax impact of each different choice. We do have a column here. This is our existing school bond. I wanted to make sure that it was clear, what do we pay now? And this is what the increase would be for these different choices. Because sometimes you can say, well, I got a $100,000 home, and we're going to do 25 million, it's $12 a year. Well, you've got to remember, you're paying 64 currently. This chart stops at 250. We're kind of limited in how much space we've got, but I think it gives a pretty general idea. We do have the larger sheet, so that, you know, these numbers go up to half a million dollars, and the commercial property goes up to $5 million, and they've got the range here with all of the farmland. And these numbers do reflect the ag school in there already, so that's there. And then here's the, how much would you support? Would you support this, this, this? Would you not support it? Need a lot more information. And that's the end of the survey. So this is going to give us a reasonable or some type of picture of what our community's going to say. This is not, again, the board makes the decision on what we're going to do. This is just feedback and information from our communities. It's like the task force, community task force. They can give you a recommendation, but it's still the board that makes that call on this, so.
And we're recommending, like, not each household do it, but each person, like voter in the household do it, or?
Each household will get a survey. There are times when, I think they've said, like, you know, maybe a husband and wife disagree. So that's why you can get your own survey, and you can do that. So we're not limiting that, but we're just sending out to each household. But each household can, can request an additional one. So that, that could be how that works. But that's our survey. Where it's at? Questions, comments, feedback?
Do I have a motion to approve the survey?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any discussion, any questions?
Survey should be completed by October 17th. They then take a couple of weeks, and I believe we're looking at November 10th.
So...
It's November 7th. Task force meeting to go over it, and then I think the following week, we're looking at a special school board meeting for the recommendation from the task force, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this community survey signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.18, approve school food service agreement for 1819 with Tahr.
Have a yearly agreement, so.
Okay.
This is our third year with Tahr. We do have a food service director been hired. Gene Bailey, right? We met her once. And then they also hired like a head cashier that will handle a lot of the paperwork for the notices and when things are going out. We've got a new system for paying or the electronic system, so that works very well. So I think we should, we had some issues last spring. This should help to clear things up.
Good.
Should run, should run pretty well. That's where we're at. But the food service agreement is what we've been doing every year.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the food service agreement for 201819 with Tahr?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Any discussion? More, I know, I was going to say, do I want, do we want to discuss? Sorry, I forgot that.
I just have a question.
Yep, thanks, sorry, Carrie.
Did the, did the price per meal change at all?
For students?
Right.
No.
Okay. I couldn't, I don't ever pay attention to what it is.
Student price, the price is there. The thing that changes in here is what we pay Tahr per meal.
Right, right. I just wanted to, yeah.
And those numbers go up a little bit. They've got some increases that go in there that, that's just part of it.
Yep.
But we have not changed our student prices. We've looked at them. We're, we're not on the low end there, so we're good for a few years, I think, with our food, with our prices for our lunch.
I just, that was my only question. I just...
They don't dictate our lunch...
No, that's all right.